Hello and welcome to the 2020 Monongalia County Commission Candidate Forum. I would like to thank our candidates for being here with us so that we can learn a little bit more about their platforms. My name is Daniel Eichenbaum of Mountaineers for Progress, and I will be one of your co-moderators for this evening. Joining me is Mavis Grant of PFLAG.
This event is being co-hosted by four local, nonpartisan, nonprofit organizations: the League of Women Voters here in Monongalia County, Morgantown Kingwood NAACP, Mountaineers for Progress, and PFLAG Morgantown.
As a reminder, the last day to register to vote is October 13th, 2020. West Virginia has online voter registration, and you can go to our Secretary of State's website to check on your registration status, update your information, or register to vote. Early voting will take place between October 21st and 31st. Election Day is Tuesday, November 3rd.
Absentee ballots must be postmarked by November 3rd and received no later than November 9th, or they can be hand-delivered to the county clerk no later than November 2nd. If you are voting absentee, be sure to return your ballot early to avoid possible postal delays.
Our candidates will have three minutes for introductions. We will be asking a series of questions. The candidates have not seen these questions before this evening. Each candidate will have one minute to answer the question. They will be warned when they have 30 seconds left, then 15, and finally, when time is up. We will be alternating which candidate answers first. The candidates will then have three minutes each for a final closing statement.
Our candidates for county commission are Ed Hawkins, Republican, and Jeff Arnett, Democrat. So, let's get started. Mr. Arnett, would you please go ahead and introduce yourself?
Yes, I'd be glad to. Thank you, and thank you for having us for this forum. It's nice to actually be able to participate in a campaign activity. It's been rather challenging with COVID. A little about me, I am Jeff Arnett. I'm the Democratic nominee for county commissioner. I'm from this town. I'm married to the same woman for 18 years, and I have three kids, 16, 13, and eight, each in one in high school, one in middle school, and one in grade school. I'm a real estate lawyer and a state lawyer here in Morgantown, have been for 20 years. I'm vested in this community. I have a reason that I want it to continue to succeed and be all that it can be and all that it has been. I want my kids to want to stay here. I want them to have the opportunities that I've had in order to continue to prosper in this county. We have a unique county here, and we have survived many recessions and economic downturns, and we continue to thrive. And that's because of our unique relationship with the university and because of our proximity to outlying areas like Pittsburgh. And our development in this town has been outstanding over the last 12 years especially. I'm a son of two schoolteachers. My mom was a grade school teacher for 30 years. My dad taught at the university. I'm very familiar with both of those institutions and how they work and how those people are affected, and many people in this town are as well. I have a vested interest in the senior Monongayians. I've been on the board there for two years, and I'd like to see us really do more for our seniors in this town. And on a personal note, this race for county commission has always been something I've wanted to do. I had a great-grandfather that was a county commissioner in the 40s, and when he passed away, the governor appointed my great-grandmother to take his spot. She was one of the first women county commissioners in the state, and especially in Monongalia County. And so, it's always been a sense of pride for me for that, and I'd like to follow in footsteps and carry that on. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and that's me.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Hawkins, would you introduce yourself?
Why, yes. My name is Ed Hawkins, and I'm the incumbent candidate for Monongalia County Commissioner. Tonight, I want to tell you a few things about myself and how those things came to be. For anyone who knew my mother, Ethel Mae Hawkins, you know that she was spunky and always willing to take a risk, a chance. In her heyday, she could often be found on the dance floor at the Elks, and when she wasn't working at One Valley Bank or dancing with my father at the Elks, she raised my brother, my sister and I. And I didn't know it, but when I was younger, my mom instilled in me the drive to volunteer, a solid work ethic, and how to play nice. And don't quote that to my brother. In the past 30 years, I've volunteered in various ways, including as a board member for Camp Muffley, volunteered for each leader, just like my mom, and beginning in 2009 with the Mon County Fair. In conjunction with my role as a commissioner, I'm also a board member of the Metropolitan Theater, the Monongalia Planning Commission, the Extension Services Commission, and county liaison, the volunteer fireman of Monongalia County. I consider my county commission responsibilities my full-time job, which I take very seriously. I have the same concerns you do. We need better roads, and in this new normal, we need better internet connectivity, and we need to be able to have ways of being a community again. Important to the future of this county is the ability for our elected leaders to play nice and build consensus. I have a personal track record of being able to do that, and most evident recently with the collaboration between the university, the city, the governor's office, the health department, and the county school officials as we navigate COVID-19. I wish to continue my hard work for you, the citizens of this county. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to be with you, if you will, this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hawkins. Now, we're going to proceed to our questions this evening. This first one, Mr. Hawkins, is to you. What is your position on the establishment of a metropolitan area via annexation or minor boundary adjustment?
Well, quite frankly, there's no position to be taken anymore because the state government has already taken care of this, unless there is a full agreement of an area, every partner that, every property holder that is in that particular area, then there can't be. So, minor boundary adjustment essentially doesn't exist anymore.
Thank you. Mr. Arnett, same question to you.
Yes, I too have been concerned about this issue, and as Mr. Hawkins has stated, the legislature has seemingly taken care of that. I was not in favor of annexation without representation, so to speak, as I felt it was lacking the sufficient citizen input to put it through. But as Mr. Hawkins did state, he is absolutely correct. The legislature has effectively ended it unless you get full cooperation from those that are affected to be annexed. So, it's sort of a moot issue at this point.
Okay. Mr. Arnett, I'm going to start with you for the next question.
Okay.
How can the county be more proactive in improving services to areas outside the city?
Well, the way they can be more proactive is first identifying what those services that are needed are. I know personally that outside of the city limits, we have many seniors that are in need of more services than they're currently getting. The Senior Mon's does a wonderful job in servicing many of those folks, but there are more out there that need services, need more funding in order to have meals delivered, respite care, and different services that can be provided by the county, or at least funding can be provided by the county to provide those for those citizens. And other organizations that need those services certainly need to be serviced by the county and the funding that the commission can provide, and certainly be open to hearing from them and what's needed. And it really comes down to the funding, quite honestly.
Okay. Mr. Hawkins, would you respond to that question?
Right now, the biggest challenge that we have is broadband connectivity, or lack of it. The mere fact that our children are having to be driven to hotspots in the west, particularly in the western end of the county, to have availability for internet connection. Education is probably the key element in this county. We were founded, and we have grown because of West Virginia University. And to look at education being lacking, we're looking at working with the school board as well as national, or national elected officials to stop talking about this and see what we can do about getting this connectivity throughout the county so that everybody is on an equal footing. These children should not be left behind.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Mr. Hawkins, this next question's to you first. What is your stance on the establishment of a farmland protection board in Mon County? Please explain.
Is this a softball? And those of you who know me know that in my first six months, I did approach this subject and asked the farmland protection individual from Preston County to come to Monongalia County and give us an update. It was not warmly met. I actually asked her to come again a couple of years later. And if you're familiar, just less than a month ago, we had her come and give another presentation. It is my point, and I will be putting it on the agenda, to have a vote because we have a board ability. It's already established. What we do not have is the funding. So, it's my hope that we will be able to take some of the property transfer tax instead of using it elsewhere, as would not raise your taxes, but it would be used to begin farmland protection. And thank you for that question.
Thank you very much. Mr. Arnett, same question to you.
Got a slightly different stance on that. I'm not sure how you can establish that and fund that without raising the tax on the transfer stamps. Currently, they're $4.40 per 100,000 of the sale. Preston County's is $7.70. The Farm Protection Bureau would get a third of that money. So, if you're going to establish it and not take monies from the commission or from the general budget, then you would have to raise those taxes, and it would be raising it by amount of 50%. So, putting the burden of protecting farmland on the taxpayers, I feel is an overburden on them, and I don't see that it's really something that we need to dive into.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Arnett, the next question is for you. How will you foster a collaborative working relationship with the municipalities in the county?
So, it's a very good question, and it's something that I believe is sorely needed. The relationship at times, at least what I've followed with the city in particular and the county, has been contentious. There's been finger pointing, and I'm not going to say name-calling, but there's been a lot of talk as one to the other. They seem to get along fine, and then when it comes down to the point, there seems to be a lot of back-talking. And I think that subcommittees meeting with each other on a regular basis can help that. I think we need to reach out to our different communities in Blacksville and Star City and Westover and find out what it is that we need to do to get along together and to work to make this county a better place. We've got a great opportunity here to keep being the leader in this state, and we need to do that together with the surrounding municipalities that encompass the entire county.
I would state that I do believe we do have a collaborative working relationship, particularly with the city of Morgantown. We have met constantly over the course of the past week, trying to firm up numbers on a COVID response to send to the governor. The leadership forum that was established when I first started has fallen by the wayside, and so, my commission has decided that we are going to reinstitute this, in other words, having everybody get together, including WBU and other individuals that, you know, have a leadership capability, and think that we can work more, we can work more together. But there is no sense of lacking of communication with either Star City or Davy Johnson over in Westover. We all talk. Herman Reed is in Star City. Blacksville, we go out there often. So, we're not unknown to the other municipalities in this area.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hawkins. This next question's for you. What would you do to encourage more organized growth and development in the county?
Well, let's continue with what we're already doing, but I think the biggest thing that we can do right now is look at the new interchange that would service the park to over in Westover. I think that if we get that interchange, if you would, I can't tell you what is promised, but there's a couple of industries that want to come in to the area, and this could be the fact that we have so much growth that could be achieved, that it would put jobs that would pale in comparison, I think, to what Procter &amp; Gamble did over in the Panhandle. We really are poised and working on that for a TIP project to put forth and see that we get this interchange established to the park.
Thank you. Mr. Arnett, same question.
I think the number one thing that we can do is try to increase our MSA number, which is the Metropolitan Statistical Analysis that the government, the federal government puts for your area. We currently include Preston County and Monongalia County. If we can get, if we can lobby them to include the entire I-79 northern corridor, including Marion County and Green County, which is currently attributed to an MSA, we could get our rating up into the, under 200, which would put us in an area where we could attract almost any business or company. Right now, we're in the 300 level, and we just simply can't attract a lot of these larger businesses as a result of that. If we could increase that level, it's merely a question of petitioning the Bureau of Statistics to include us in those two other regions, we can increase our MSA and do a lot towards bringing in and attracting more businesses, retail and employment-type businesses to the area.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Arnett, what impact do you see COVID-19 having on the county's fiscal stability?
Well, hopefully, it won't be dire. We do have the advantage of having a wealthy county and a healthy reserve. We are going to experience losses in tax revenues, and there's no way around that. Hopefully, we can stem the tide and continue to move on with increased development in the county, and we keep moving along in that direction, and I think we'll be okay. But certainly, it's a concern, and certainly, it's something we need to keep our eye on because there are counties out there that are suffering greatly as a result of this, and we have the, we have the ability to rise above it if we can continue with development and if we can continue with encouraging businesses to come here by giving them a place that's ripe for development and ripe for them to come set up their businesses.
Mr. Hawkins? Same question.
Yes. I don't feel that the impact is going to be great on the county. Now, our income for county commission and running the county does come from property taxes, and I don't think that you're going to see a drop-off on that. Our current budget at county commission levels, right around $37,000, $1,800,000. So, we're looking fully funded on the contingency. We've also set money aside in our budget this year to deal with something that may come out out of the ordinary. So, we've already had budget adjustments, looking forward in the future and seeing what we have to provide. I know that we've been able to do a lot of things that other counties have not because of the standing, in addition to the fact that we've been able to cut the property taxes three years in a row. So, the property taxes have not gone up on the individuals in the county.
Mr. Hawkins, this next question's for you. How would you support diversity in county government boards and committees?
You ask the toughest questions because the answer is trying to get the volunteers. If you've listened to a county commission meeting, every meeting, we put forth what we're seeking. Recruitment is very difficult. You know, when you're asking somebody to take on a commitment and serve on a board, it makes no difference whether it's diverse or not. Getting the, actually, just getting the volunteers is the difficulty. I wish we did have the ability to say, going to a certain group and saying, "Look, we need you to come forward because it would help us." But getting them there to the table, there's no incentive to want to go and be on a board that demands your time, demands your circumstance, unless you're willing, ready, and wanting to serve.
Thank you. Mr. Arnett, same question to you.
I think you take a directed approach, quite honestly. Before I served on the board of the senior Monongayians, I had no idea that service was a possibility like that until Bob Beech asked me to be on the board, and it's been one of the most rewarding experiences of my life. I think you directly target those organizations and people that you see out in the community, taking an interest in their community, and you simply ask them if they'd like to be involved in getting at things from the inside, getting them on boards, getting them on committees. I think you can take a direct grassroots approach. You could do a Facebook advertising campaign. You could talk to the leaders of these many groups that we've seen emerge throughout this last six months of social unrest, and talk to them and see if they'd be interested in coming in and having a say in how the policies are made that they are directly affected by and perhaps are protesting against. I think you take a direct approach, and you go right out.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Arnett, what issue has the most impact on minority communities, and how would you address it?
Easy answer right now would be to say the most, the biggest issue is the one that you see most in the papers, the protests that you see going on and the social unrest and protests in the east. I think it has more to do with just social economic impact. I think we've got a potential eviction crisis on our hands coming at the end of the year once that restriction is lifted, and I think we need to take an active approach in trying to assist people who are going to be facing those evictions with helping find affordable housing and helping them get along through the tide so they don't end up in shelters or bunking up with, in apartments with friends because that's going to even further spread the COVID, and I think it's something that we can do as a community to help these folks get along if in fact they're facing this eviction. So, I would say definitely it's the housing, potential housing crisis that we're going to see at the end of the year.
Thank you. Mr. Hawkins, same question.
It's not just the minority that this has affected, but food insecurity, I think, is possibly one of our biggest issues that we've discovered relative to what has occurred over the course of the past six months. We find that the food factories are feeding more and more of the individuals that are a poverty line level, and it doesn't have to be a minority to be a poverty line. And so, I think we have to look and say, "Okay, what are we going to do for all these individuals who are stressed, who need our help?" I think that giving that aid and looking at it is going to be something that we're going to be faced with now and in the future.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. This next question's for you, Mr. Hawkins. Would you support a county-wide citizen review board for law enforcement oversight? Please explain.
You know, it has not been brought up to us to do this, but I'll be honest with you, the answer's yes. I would support it. Now, how it's brought up is, if you will, a touchy subject. In other words, you're dealing with individuals that have certain protections that others do not in terms of a oversight and review, but I don't think anybody should be above review. We're trying to be and have been as transparent as any organization could possibly be. I know that one thing I'm proud of is that I was able to get my fellow commissioners to acknowledge the fact that a work session was indeed a meeting, and it should be minuteed and recorded. So, I think that transparency should also extend to those who are in the police force.
Thank you. Mr. Arnett, same question to you.
I think a citizen review board would have its place. However, in the current proposed form, it's actually illegal. I think it needs to be tweaked if that's going to be the case. Certainly, citizen input is important, especially in this time and age, but I don't think you can discount those that actually have served and continue to serve behind the shield and their ability to review what their officers are doing or aren't doing, that they're supposed to be doing. But the way the current proposal is written and the power that that board would have scares me a bit because I fear that they're going to bring on some litigation from the state level, as the Attorney General pointed out, his opinion, that it was in fact illegal, and he would enforce that if he had to. I think they just need to make sure if they're going to do it, that they need to do it in accordance with the law, or, as we've seen, petition the legislature with our many elected representatives to change that law so that they can do what they want to do properly.
Thank you.
Mr. Arnett, should the county commission work to expand protections beyond employment and housing for all citizens regardless of sexual orientation and gender identity? And if so, how?
Well, it's a very touchy subject, of course, for some people. I think we have to be careful about what things the county commission does and what authority the county commission has to make social policy. Certainly, I believe all citizens, regardless of sexual orientation, race, or gender, should have all the same protections that anyone else. We should be completely blind to their particular positions and their particular stances and their particular social positions on life and how they live their lives. But I think we'd have to be careful as a county commission to go out and make policies that maybe aren't in the, aren't really in the power or the purview of the county commission to make, but certainly, I'd be supportive of anything that we can do to help these people and to help all people live their lives the way they want to live their lives and not be discriminated against in any way whatsoever.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes, I was thinking about a question similar to this, and I stated that I might be the only guy you know that has danced on the dance floor and vice versa. So, I have a good, a strong relationship with the gay, lesbian community. The problems that Mr. Arnett just said is absolutely correct. We are, as a county commission, an arm of the state, and can we extend beyond what is already afforded protection? The answer's no. We are not enabled to do anything that the state doesn't allow us to do. So, we cannot say we're going to do this and do it if it is already a state code and to that level.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Hawkins, if the state legislature fails to pass the Fairness Act in the next session, what should the county do to protect its LGBTQ+ residents?
Again, you have the same question. The ability of a county commission is to foster community relationships, provide safety, provide health, but it does not have the ability to enact legislation upon its own.
Thank you. Mr. Arnett, same question to you.
I think what we can do is reach out to our state-elected officials and our federally-elected officials to effectuate those changes so that we can foster that change legally, balance whatever that statute is that gets passed. We have many wonderfully skilled and elected representatives that have been serving this county for a long time, and they're very capable of petitioning the legislature and proposing bills to get that through. I think we can certainly make it a point to express our interest in having that done and encourage them in any way that we can and support them in any way we can to get this type of legislation passed. But as Mr. Hawkins stated, social issues aren't so much the job of the county commission but rather to foster a safe environment.
Thank you.
Mr. Arnett, how would you propose addressing homelessness in Monongalia County?
Well, and that's another, that's another hot topic around town, isn't it? We have, we definitely have a problem, and we have those that want help, and we have a duty, I think, to provide them with that help. We have shelters, the Bartlett House, and other opportunities for them. Some folks don't want the help, but I think we have a duty still to offer it to them and give them every possibility that we can to help these folks find affordable housing, to give them an environment with which they can live and protect their children and themselves. And so, I think from a county's perspective, we can certainly look at the funding into different areas of housing for these folks, and I know the commission did some good work during the beginning of COVID with housing some of these folks in hotels, and I think working toward a goal like that is something certainly within the purview of the commission, and I think it's a necessary thing.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes. We obviously do have a problem. It ties in with substance abuse. There is a lot of social issues that go along with this. I am familiar, because of my sister being in North Carolina, of a program that was established there called PROSA. And what this is, is a substance abuse program that provides housing and then transitions these individuals into a working, productive member of the community. We have too many silos that put up, trying to help here or trying to help there, that perhaps, if we might look at a role model like this, establishing something that would really put not just homelessness but substance abuse as well as other issues on this table as a cure. homelessness, but substance abuse, as well as other issues on this table, as a cure, bringing them back to the community.
Thank you.
And finally, we have concluded with all the questions for tonight. So now we have, now we're going to move on to closing statements. So, Mr. Hawkins, would you like to offer us your closing statement, please?
Thank you, and I'll be brief. The challenge we have facing us is unprecedented, and now is not the time to be starting over with new and inexperienced leadership in our county. We have an excellent team in place with my fellow commissioners, Tom Bloom and Sean Secora. There are no decisions made that are personally beneficial or because somebody has a personal agenda. We are a unified group who rely on one another's strengths to get the job done. I've worked hard to gain the trust of the citizens, that of my fellow commissioners, as well as those who have endorsed me, including the North Central West Virginia Home Builders Association, the volunteer fireman of Montague County, and the Montague County Farm Bureau. I am available, transparent, and responsive, and will continue to be that over the course of the next six years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. And finally, Mr. Arnett, your closing statement, please.
Thank you. While I'm not experienced on the county commission, I am experienced in two areas that the county commission has a lot of power over. The final say on administration of estates, as well as the final say on appraisement appeals from the assessor's office. I have worked exclusively in real estate for the past 20 years. I understand development. I understand real estate property values. I would be a valuable asset to the commission in that area. I've also administered many estates and been the attorney of record for countless estates over the last 20 years. I fully understand the estate process, the UCIary Commissioners, and the circuit court pleadings that happen as a result of these cases. I would, I think I offer a unique skill set in those two areas that's not currently filled on the county commission. I really appreciate the time to talk here tonight. It's been nice to actually talk about some issues with someone. I appreciate Mr. Hawkins' participation and that this has been a really clean and nice campaign at this point. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, we certainly thank both of you for participating in this forum this evening and being so flexible with using the Zoom platform. This is new to all of us, and we appreciate your willingness to participate. And we want to tell people to not forget to vote. Check your voter's registration. Get out there and vote, and
Absolutely.
Yes. You can find all the information that you need at GoVoteWV.com. Thank you so much.
I have to tell you that that was Carrie's message the other day. And she put forth that the, after we have the public testing, which is not an exciting thing to be a county commissioner for, I've got to tell you that. But the early voting, you know, at all four locations, which are the Mountaineer Mall, Basin Dixon Park, WVU Alumni Center, and Fort Pierpont, do begin on October 21st and will conclude on October 31st. So please, go out there and make your voice known. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.